The finance committee will begin. Approval of the minutes from the past meeting, Councilor Carey assures us those minutes will be in as well as the minutes in the next two meetings before our next meeting, which will be sometime in June.
Yeah, not by tomorrow.
You're not going to get them all by tomorrow? What's the matter with you? Mayor, do you have any communications other than what's on the agenda?
I do.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you want us to say something before we begin? This is public speak.
Good.
If you raise your hands, I will honor a question, but if you don't raise your hands, I will forget you.
Forget it.
Not on purpose. Okay, I want to start with the $216,000 supplemental, only because it's quick and easy. You guys have this one, $216,000? Obviously, we need to pay for snow and ice and a little assistance in the reserve fund. My only question is, is that because the reserve fund suddenly has a low balance? Oh, no. Yeah, we have to appropriate to the reserve fund. So it has a low balance right now? Okay. Good. This still leaves us some funds in free cash, does it not, Melissa?
Yeah, I need...
I don't need the exact number, but there is still a balance.
Yeah.
This happens every year.
This represents the full amount of the snow?
Overage.
Overage, I presume?
Yes, best of our knowledge. I believe that there's one bill in question, but that we budgeted to pay that, so there might be a surplus and it might close to free cash. There's one bill that...
So there's enough in here to pay it if they need to. Are I have any other questions? Anybody have any questions?
I'll move the issue.
A second.
All in favor? This is up for public hearing, right before our budget hearing. Public safety. The way I've been doing this, gentlemen, is starting with questions and then going, page 71. Starting with the police department, Bob?
Yes, sir.
I don't really go over the text. I think it's great. I read it.
Thank you.
If there's anything you want to bring up that's real important to you, now's the time.
No, I like to write, as you well know, but I thought it was important with the new administration, the new council, to new councilors.
Well, I think what the mayor's trying to do is make this also available to the public.
Right. No, but it's important that we market our brand, the police department, by way of letting everybody know what we've done in the course of 2017 and what we're doing and what we plan on doing.
On the organizational review, which I love that the mayor has done this crap, are these numbers correct or do they represent a hope? And I don't see resource officers. Did I miss them in here?
Um...
Oh, SRO, one SRO, is that it right up under dict...
Yeah, what you're looking at is my current staff.
So we do have a position of an SRO?
We do.
That's not filled, no?
No, it is. It is Officer Rick Riegowski, and that is funded out of the police, fully funded out of the police budget.
The only question I had is, we're going to have two buildings in a couple of years. Will there be two SROs?
That's going to be subject to conversation with the mayor.
With the mayor. Well, I just thought, hey, why not? Why not think about that?
We have one SRO now in all of the buildings.
Five buildings now.
Yeah, so he's...
I know, we only have one, but I was hoping that if we have only two buildings, we could afford to.
Right, two years, one each holiday. Thinking ahead.
I'm thinking ahead. I'm thinking it'd be great to have two.
I like where you're at.
So you have an SRO that travels between all the buildings right now?
Yeah, he is spread thin, for sure.
All right. Anybody have any questions on organizational review? I like in your goals and objections, you want to continue to diversify our workforce.
Correct.
I was wondering, how the heck can we do that? I mean, we have to have a minority apply.
That's exactly right.
Do we actually do affirmative action in the sense that if there are two equally qualified, a woman and a man, equally qualified in your eyes, you hire the woman because you're underrepresented in that gender?
Without a doubt.
That's what happens.
Yeah, same thing for...
Minorities.
Yeah, and the issue is recruiting and hiring. If they're not applying and we're looking, you know, we're building our specials program again right now, as a matter of fact.
And the specials move up to being...
Exactly. Yes, that's our hiring practice is, it's worked very, very well for us over the years. It's a really good reason why not many people ever leave our department, and we have other agencies who are always trying to lateral over to our department, but we stand firm and hire from our specials pool. We get to know them, they get to know us. We know if we're a good fit, they know if they're a good fit, and then we pick our full-timers out of that. And I was a special. Many, many of the guys that are on lock, lock, and to me were specials, so our hiring practice works well, but as you stated, it all boils down to applicants.
Okay. Under replace and upgrade equipment, we're constantly still going after public safety grants, are we not?
We are.
Probably in both fire and police?
Constantly.
Did you see any reason to believe you would be losing those grants, denying those grants because of Massachusetts recent status, things like that?
No.
I'm worried about that, but you don't see anything?
No, I don't see it.
You know what I'm referring to, Mayor?
If I could just jump in here. One, Senator Hammerson and other senators just today supported Mass Chief's language around adding $2 to car rentals to ensure that we have proper training funds and training equipment for police departments as well. We're anticipating some information from Senator Warren's office about a DOJ set of grants that we seem to be appropriate for, and I'll let you know, and I'm just waiting for details.
That's good to hear. I'm just a little...
Thank you for bringing that up.
I love all that.
So that sailed through the House of Representatives today, and it's a, what is it, it's a $2 per contract for rental car, and that money is earmarked specifically for police training. In Massachusetts, we are dead last in the country for police training funding. So this will generate a revenue stream not to be more than $10 million specific to police training, similar with the fire department has by way of homeowner's insurance. That's what funds there. That's their funding stream. So this will be the funding stream, a set funding stream for police training. So we're paying, and it'll give the budgets, my police budget, some relief when we send officers to either in-service training or the full-time police academy and a array of other trainings that we pay for now out of our budget, so it'll give us some relief there.
Okay, I'm ready to move to the numbers. Is any councilor have any other questions? Page 80. I noticed that the total under recommended full-time regular salary is significantly higher than the original budget from last year, but I also noticed that full-time permanent supervisory is gone. Did that number over there?
That's correct. We did some consolidation throughout the budget, you'll see, where we warped line items together, and it just made good sense to me and it certainly made good sense to the finance director and the mayor.
Okay.
That's why that number...
Well, I looked at that and I said, it must be there, okay.
Yeah.
And there is a certain percentage collective bargaining increase in there?
There will be, we're waiting for the contract. It's not in this budget.
It's not in the budget?
No.
Okay. All right.
Was it, it wasn't negotiated by the time of budget?
Right.
So you just do a supplemental later on here?
Yes, we're actually still waiting on the signatures.
I noticed that overtime, you went down to 150, and overtime training is down. Is that just a goal, or do you think that we will actually reduce overtime this year?
Well, based on the budget that's in front of me, we have reduced overtime for next year, and we've done a really good job of reducing overtime this year, and that has come by way of restructuring the organization as a whole. The policy around training was a real big one. I'm not sending officers to training on overtime. If we can, if they can admin their shift off and they don't have to fill their shift, if I'm still above my minimum, mainly, I don't have to fill a shift, I'll let them go to training, and they're happy to do it because they're getting the training. I have a group of young officers on our department, and they are hungry for training, and I'm happy to give it to them because we're one of the best trained in the police departments in all of Western Mass, and we do it because we, the administration, work with the union on allowing them to go to training. I'm not paying them overtime, they're getting their shift off, they're getting regular pay, their shift's off, I don't have to fill it with overtime, and it's worked really well.
Is minimum manning a collective bargaining thing?
It's a, for me, it's a collective bargaining thing for the fire chief. For me, it's a public safety issue.
Public safety issue?
Yeah.
So it's not something that's directed by your agreements with the union?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that's good to see. I'm hoping overtime can go down there. Bottom line is only 35,000 more than last year's budget. Your actuals are down, but I assume they'll catch up.
They're definitely going to catch up, and, you know, we are going to have...
It is May, you have another month to spend, aren't you?
Right. But this budget is, essentially, it's level funded when you factor in incentive increases, pay step increases, and I have to account for that money somewhere. So it's going to be, it's going to be tight next year, but I'm happy, anytime we get to reduce the overtime, I'm happy to do it.
Questions, councilor?
I think you did a good job with your questions.
Okay. Let's go through and ask when I see anomalies, or not anomalies, differences from previous years I ask questions. Going over to crossing guards, that's level funded almost?
Yes.
So I don't have any questions on that? Do you guys have any questions?
None, of course.
Okay.
I know, I think they have a question. It has to do with requested little cones that had been requested. How did that all end up?
So the...
I haven't been in that area.
The ask went to the DPW initially.
Can we be informed of what this is about?
We were at a meeting, and it was presented before the council. We weren't there at that meeting, I'm not sure.
Well, I think I remember some.
There was a request for cones on a corner that's dangerous, Route 141, Hoy Oak Street, Cottage Street.
It's essentially a crossing.
It's crossing on a, almost on a corner. It's a big, the big bend.
And you want to put cones in the crossfire?
No, no, no.
The crossing guards, Jesus, there's something you can do because people are running right through the stop sign when I put it up, and it's a little dangerous. I said, okay, well, maybe if you could do some cones or something.
Cones?
Well, at least in advance. The thought was, you were telling the traffic, you look like you're on the last floor.
No, no.
There's a cone there now.
Yeah, so the bottom line is, the request went to DPW, and then the person that was asking for it had come to a couple of meetings where I was present, and I wanted to buy her the cone.
This is the crossing guard that came to us?
Yes.
Maple Street?
Yes, yeah. You see her quite frequently, frequently at Orton, the public safety.
Well, I don't blame her.
So she has, it's a dangerous intersection, and she has one now, and she takes it out there every single day.
Good.
So she has it.
One, and that's sufficient, you think?
She, I haven't heard back from her since. She was happy as a clam when she got it, so I haven't heard back from her since.
I know, when we tried to put a police officer...
Not on that any...
On road duty, we put up, I love it when there's those big signs...
Yeah.
That say, "Police officer ahead" or something. I guess maybe that's the next level to do.
And we have, certainly my traffic unit has been spending a lot of time over there monitoring her in the crosswalk, in the motorway, public.
That's appreciated.
So they spend a ton of time over there.
Well, yeah, especially if they're running stop signs.
Right.
Okay, moving on to animal control. I'm just curious, I forget, is this with another city or is this just us, the animal control officer?
We do not have a, I'm sorry.
I'm asking anybody that can answer.
We do not have an animal control officer. We put those responsibilities and duties to the Westfield Animal Control, as you may recall.
Right, and the police department deals with it.
And we're working through that right now. It's actually been a point of contention with the police department, the union, and not with the union, the administration, or the mayor's office. It's a, just, we're drafting a policy with Monica now on what the roles and responsibilities of police officers will be with regard to animal control, whether it be wild animals or domesticated animals, and then what we do to get over to Westfield. And they come out here, Westfield Animal Control comes out here, and then the health department has a voice as well in that, so we're actually in the middle. It's funny you mention it.
So if we have an animal issue where somebody bites, a dog bites somebody, police are called?
Oh, yeah.
That's where it goes.
Right.
We used to have an animal officer that would...
Right. We get called on that, and then we in turn notify the animal control and Westfield Mayor's Office.
Okay. I know this changed a few years ago.
Yes.
Refreshing my memory.
And we're still working through it.
Okay. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Dispatch, is this you, Chief Rodger?
Yes, it is.
Is the personnel that's listed here actual or...
That is...
I mean, are there some that have to be filled?
No, those are all people that are there.
Right. And we have enough to... How many dispatch people are on in every shift?
Most are two. Sometimes that includes the dispatch supervisor as the second, but there'll be one dispatcher, the dispatch supervisor will be in her office doing administrative work. If I get busy, she comes out.
Is she still the same person?
No, Brenda started, I don't remember when to start.
A year.
About a year ago.
Yeah, I thought we had...
She came in just at the end of last fiscal year.
We were lucky enough to get her from Hoy Oak, and she's been on the air.
Is dispatch under T-Po?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to say, as an aside personally, I never had to deal with our dispatch until we had an accident in front of my home. They were so professional, I was very impressed. Please pass that on.
Yeah, thank you.
She kept me on the phone, making sure, I had to walk around to make sure everybody was okay, it's a bee at work, so, major accident right in front of my house. Never caught that guy, did we?
No.
I do notice under dispatch personal services, the salary line, I'm on page 85, guys, that the salary went down, is that because it's entry levels or may plan different gray steps, I mean?
A big turnover. We had dispatch supervisor left in the community, we had two full-time dispatchers leave to pursue other career paths, so it's because we're at entry level.
Entry level, that's what I wrote down.
And our current dispatch supervisor spent a lot of time getting the exact cost, a penny, on what salary would be to make it, to make the budget. If you look at what the request is, it's, other than FY '16, it's the lowest it's been the last, the previous two fiscal years, it's actually lower overall.
Yeah, it's $4,000. The bottom line, grand total, was lower. Good. Okay. You guys have any personal?
Looks good. Love it when they keep it tight.
Fire and ambulance. I noticed that in the graphic description of people in charge, you have A, B, C, D group. Is that who's on duty at any one time during a shift?
One of the four is on duty.
We don't have four captains, do we?
Yes, the shift has...
We do have four captains. Okay, I wasn't sure how that... All right, good.
And then there's a captain and fire prevention as well.
Probably were, so a shift is 24 hours, isn't it? Okay. All right. Any questions on that?
Just a quick question. The fire prevention captain fills in when somebody's away on vacation, the captain or no? I know by contract, when someone, one of the firefighters moves up to a captain, they're paid like a captain, so I just didn't know if it was anyway that...
The fire prevention captain will fill in during the day on a short-term basis, but there's...
It'd be impossible to keep the fire prevention officer away from the other duties.
Right. You realize you're not there when you make statements.
I'm just, he knows.
Listen, I know, whenever anyone needs the services for an inspection, we want you there, for sure.
Fortunate, unfortunate, unfortunate for us, fortunate for him, when the real estate market gets active in East Hampton like it is, today, I think there was eight closings that needed inspections. I think this week we've done, I think we're close to 20.
I think it's great. I moved two years ago to my house that my son bought and the other house, all new detectors, making sure, and they're CO2 as well now, right?
Yeah, CO, carbon dioxide.
You have your finger up.
I have mine up. Just running in inspections, and Chief Marner and I have had a couple of quick conversations. Number of inspections as houses are bought, but something that we would like, I would like to see more of too, is we have several houses with different apartment units and checking those that maybe three families and are more, and going through some of the older house. I just remember Chief Marner telling me that that's hours, like double-digit hours to figure out what's going on and how to correct the situation. So I would, I would just say on top of those inspections, houses closing, there are also additional inspections in properties.
Are they happening in those apartments now?
We started last year.
So you can just call for an inspection at any time?
Well, in Mass general law, it's the building inspector's responsibility to inspect a multiple family, which is three or more, in consultation with the board of health and the fire department. It wasn't done for a few years. Let me rephrase that. It was done, but there was no physical presence in the buildings from the building commissioner's office. We started last year, now Deputy Chief Heneman and our current building commissioner, they did six in two weeks. It took them four months to do the follow-up inspections. We came across, out of six, we came across two illegal apartments, we came across hoarding issues, so it took a long time, and we just started in a geographic area. We didn't go to places we knew were going to be whores, and it became, we were in housing court, so multi-families, because they weren't done with people in them for so long, is a tedious process, and when Deputy Chief Heneman was in fire prevention, he was trying to do those along with the smoke detectors, and then I was the one going to housing court. I was the one writing orders and notice, it just, and we've got over 300 of those to do.
We have 300 multi-family apartment buildings, the small ones?
Buildings or units?
Units.
300 units?
Right.
Within some number of buildings?
I forget.
But anyway, 300 units to expend?
Ninety-something multi-family buildings in the city.
But that's not like Cottage Street, that's an apartment house, that's an apartment building. You're not talking about those.
That's a multi-family, that gets...
Yeah, but it's not, is that what you're talking about, those?
It's those, it's three-family.
Okay.
Like everything on Cottage Street, that's more than a two-family. Pleasant Street.
Well, I'm happy you're doing them. So are you saying, Mayor, that we're going to need to fund this differently in the future?
I just think it's one thing in the fire department's budget that really needs a serious look at as far as staffing, and certainly it's a conversation I'd love to have with the fire department. Every dollar is tight, I understand, but I just think as, as our housing situation one, our housing stock is decreasing in comparison to demand, and folks looking at how best to use their multi-family space, we need some good eyes on that. I think it also would help planning and the housing partnership to better identify the actual numbers of units, so if we're going in and finding a three-family split into a five-family or whatnot, we want to grab that, we want to grab that data. We want to understand what's going on at those houses, and the time on building inspector and fire is substantial. It's one of those, they don't know what they're walking into, and, you know, eyes on, you know, there needs to be follow-up, and they're doing it.
Stolyte or Shirley, you're catching them.
Yeah.
The problem is, we do one inspection, it creates not just a load for us, but health department and building department. So one inspection...
You guys all go in at the same time?
Yes. So one inspection will turn into that inspection, hours of research to write the order of notice, and then two or three follow-ups, housing court if necessary. So we have a building commissioner that's...
So if they don't have working fire detectors, you have to write a notice.
We give them 48 hours to, or if it's really bad, we use that great term forthwith, and then we can haul them into housing court for non-compliance, and the housing court does not like seeing landlords come in for safety issues. They don't usually fare well.
The landlords don't?
Right.
Yes. That's a good thing. All right, going on to the, if you guys don't have any questions, going on to the numbers. The full-time supervisory, is that the addition of a deputy chief?
Yes.
Okay.
For a full year.
Can you explain again for the dumb senior citizen chairman of the finance committee who forgets what incentive is? It's up a lot this year, and I'm just curious.
That's the education incentive or college incentive.
So requirement wants to get...
So for a college degree, for a CDL driver's license, which is not mandated to operate the truck, but there's a huge gray area when we send it for maintenance or when the ladder truck goes to New York, the law is not clear whether we need it. It says in a normal performance of our duties. Don't know if bringing a truck for maintenance is a normal... And going out of state, so we pay, somebody who voluntarily gets their CDL, they get a...
Is that part of collective bargaining too?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now I remember.
Interesting point, yeah.
That's good.
Who knows?
I notice your overtime is also down. I'm happy to see that. Is that because of your full-timers or just hoping to keep it down?
Because of being fully staffed in a large part and to make the bottom line work.
That's right, you don't have any injured firefighters now.
I'm not going to answer that question, councilor. I'm not going to change myself. I'm very superstitious.
Sorry.
How about this?
You have a full-time, you have a full-time group now. Okay, good. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm curious also about radio, telephone, and other. Went from 11,300 down to 1,000. Did we buy a lot of radios or something?
No, that was to make the bottom line work.
You don't expect to need it?
We were able to purchase with the new engine, it should be delivered within a couple of weeks, and a new ambulance that should be in by July, some new portable radios, which will reduce the maintenance cost on those because they are not cheap to repair anymore. It's actually cheaper most times to throw them away and buy new than it is to get it fixed.
I noticed in my business, the FCC keeps changing frequency requirements. Does that happen to you guys too?
Yes.
Where you have to buy a whole new set of radios because they change?
We had to do that.
What frequencies you're allowed to cover?
2009, we had to replace every portable and mobile radio we owned to meet the FCC's narrow band requirements, and we're probably about five years away from another mandate of going to digital over analog.
And they don't send a check with their mandates, do they?
No, the federal government is granted unfunded mandates.
So is the state. Okay, any other questions, guys? That's mine on the budget. The fire department, anyway, I'm going to the ambulance next. Incentive is up again, it's the same thing? Is that education incentive, et cetera?
That's EMT incentive, for the different levels of EMT certification, that's a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
And all the incentives are going up because more people are utilizing it?
Well, as we retire EMT basics, we hire paramedics. The first two years, it's almost a wash, but once they hit year three, they start costing more because the percentage is higher. Because they don't get paid overtime to recertify. So they're, that's all on their own. The incentive was increased probably six or seven years ago to do away with paying them overtime for training, paying their recertification costs with the state. So they're all, they're on the hook for all of that themselves.
And the fires, more people getting degrees, more people getting CDLs.
More people getting degrees, yeah.
And at the, you just said as EMT retires, you are now hiring paramedics. So almost all your ambulance people are paramedics now?
Yeah, I think there's only probably six in the department that are still EMT basics.
And it is your policy to hire only paramedics in the future when you have a opening? That's a good thing, I think, anyway. Any other questions on ambulance? Uh, I, I, this is, this is just me being curious. Ambulance costs are covered by the patient's insurance?
No, general fund. All the insurance receipts we receive go into the general fund.
I understand that, but there is, in, well, I guess I asked a question wrong. There is, it's not balanced, but insurance does cover a lot of the, if you were to look at it back and forth. In other words, there's a revenue stream from insurance to pay for an ambulance ride. But it's not a balanced dollar.
No, Medicare, the state has put mass health reimbursements rates at, this year, at what they were in two thousand sixteen. So our ambulance revenue for this fiscal year is down compared to previous years because our reimbursement for mass health is way down. I think we're on pace for probably about six hundred thousand dollars a year in ambulance reimbursement.
Which had more than coverage, personnel and supplies?
No.
No, because the ambulance budget has no salaries.
Thank you for jumping in. The ambulance budget does not include personnel.
There's no salaries, no.
But it covers the incentive, the overtime, the supplies, the membership.
There are no salaries coming out of that.
And you need a full complement. Who knows, it can be one, two, or three ambulances out.
You have three in service right now.
Well, two, one's broken.
And going in, going into overtime?
Stop asking these questions.
One ambulance goes, are five, five people still outstanding?
Well, it's five is the minimum, all four shifts are at six.
All four shifts are at six?
We maintain two in the station. So if two ambulances goes out and there's only five working, we call one person in on overtime.
One comes in on overtime with two ambulances out, with six in the station if you happen to not have anybody out on vacation that day or ever, sick day. Okay, then you still have two, so you could have to get to the third level, and that happens about fifty times a year, I think.
All three ambulances, for FY seventeen, it was fifty-six times.
Fifty-six times.
Right now, for this fiscal year, we're at about forty-nine times. That all three are out.
Are you, is that including mutual aid ambulance runs?
No, that's just our three being out.
If Southampton has a problem and they need multiple ambulances, you guys surface, right? That's part of mutual aid, or?
But, you know, this past weekend, we had a chemical incident in a residence and-
Where was that?
I don't even remember. I was on, I was on my daughter's college graduation, and we had to have Northampton Ambulances come over because all five were tied up dealing with a chemical smell in her residence, so. We rely on everybody in our area, it's, we can't use the word regional, but our ambulance service, at least in this little part of the county, is regional, because everybody goes everywhere.
Correct.
So to that end, we have to, you know, Counselor, that we just, we, the Police Department just purchased four AEDs.
Four what?
Four automatic regulators. Normally, we would have to wait for the ambulance, or, and we've had issues, not issue, but we've had incidents in the past where the fire truck was coming to a call that we, the police were on because the ambulance was, were all tied up. And the Fire Department was bringing AEDs to us to use on somebody that was having a heart attack. So we bought four and we keep them in the line crews now. So that kinda helps with the ambulance.
And these don't take a lot of training to know how to do it?
No. No, they're, I like their, they're, they're cop-proof.
Idiot-proof, I was gonna say.
I think we have a question on the side.
Yes, sir.
I just have a question about how long, because of being that I put an insurance claim recently because I was in an accident. What amount of delay do you guys have to manage in terms of like expenditure for a trip to when like they actually send you the money?
Five years.
We're spending it right, right away, you know, we use disposables, we're buying them. A lot of that is a game that's played in the billing industry, especially in a car accident, because everybody has a deductible. So normally, the rule of thumb is, is we use a third-party billing company. They'll wait at least seven days from data transport for a motor vehicle accident. That way, the tow company, the storage yard, and a hospital have already submitted their claims and you fit your deductible. So when our bill gets submitted, payment's made from the insurance policy, not from the insured.
So like, we, we're on weeks?
Normally, from time of service to when we get reimbursement is about sixty days.
That's normal in the industry, it's not, that's not bad, I don't know.
And our collection rate, if it wasn't for the fact that we bill above Medicare rates, our collection rate would probably be in the low ninety percentile. But because Medicare only pays fifty percent of what we charge, you look at what we bill and what we collect, and it's less than fifty percent.
So I can wait sixty days to pay my premiums too, right?
Oh, yeah.
All right, any other questions before we move to building inspection? Who oversees building inspector, is that you guys or is that the mayor?
Mayor.
Hello, Mayor?
Hi.
I assume the building inspector situation personnel-wise is what we see?
Yes.
We're not short of anybody there. Is he able to manage his inspections with, with a part-time clerk?
Yes, actually, to-
Hearing that we haven't kept up with inspections in the past, I'm curious what, what's going on now?
Yeah, I mean, the-
So there, the previous inspector had a part-time alternate, a part-time inspector that did some of the stuff for him. The current inspector prefers to do them himself and with extended time in the office for the administrative assistant or clerk. He, the, the office is open and then he's able to go out and-
He's able to go out.
And do those inspections himself, and he doesn't feel the, the need to have a, a permanent part-time additional person. And that's the way he prefers to run his office. I believe that we expanded the hours of the, of the part-timer and Brenda in particular, I think, worked really well in that role because she also has a role in the Fire Department, so coordinating those two groups.
So she's part-time there, part-time there?
And she's a full-time employee.
Full-time employee working in two different departments. That's a good thing. It's kind of good because of the Fire Department's connection to building inspections, so.
Yeah, no, I think that it, it helps them.
You planned it that way, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I don't have any questions on the numbers, do you? That completes public safety, and I forgot my motion, so. Anybody got the motions? Then I move to, the bottom line is-
Reposed.
Do you happen to have a motion, so we get the right figure in the minutes?
I can grab one.
All right, we'll do the motion when you come back. I, I would rather make sure that if we're gonna state something on the air, it's the right number. Numbers matter.
Yes, they do.
I don't know if you guys-
This is our third budget hearing, we decide now, numbers matter.
I had that already in my plan, not just now.
I'm comfortable with that proposal. I don't, I don't feel the need to keep the-
Yeah, I don't, we're gonna, we're not gonna change anything. You guys are all good.
No reason for you to.
Thank you.
The Chiefs are dismissed. You're dismissed without prejudice.
Oh, thank you. I have your colleagues downstairs now.
All right, you have to go down to the-
Ordnance.
We'll go as fast as we can, Mayor.
Thank you, and, and Chairman Gerber-
It's not till six o'clock, is it? His meeting's not till six.
Mayor, I'll warm them up for you.
Great, that's all we got.
You've still got twenty minutes. You're gonna be alone down there, this, you've still got twenty minutes.
You guys invited me over to work on fire. I was in, I was in your fire station today.
Page one?
It was interesting, we, yeah.
Thank you, Melissa, I appreciate it. I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the City Council to raise and appropriate the sum of five million four hundred nine thousand three hundred, three dollars and fifty-four cents for the various departments listed under Section Two Public Safety. And that the amount listed in the Mayor's printed report must be considered specific appropriation as recommended by the Mayor. A favor?
Aye.
Public safety is done. So one, page one fifteen is human services. Board of Health, we received in the mail today. Just doing it isn't here. She has some textual changes, I mean, no big deal, right?
No big deal at all, and, and we have other textual changes to make if we're going through the budget and just picking up little things. Once budget is approved fully by City Council, Melissa and Alan in my office are gonna go through, tighten it up, make those changes. And then we'll re-post on the website and get copies out as needed.
You're talking about textual changes?
Yep, absolutely.
Right, so I believe-
Or typos for numbers and things, too?
I believe the change, because I'm major, I came this early, is on one fifteen, one of the trends. There's a period and it's after hoarding and then housing complaints, should be a next tab, like I didn't tab it down.
I got you.
Do you see that? So that, that's the textual change.
All right. Well, she wanted us to know about them, so I didn't see them as anything.
There was one numbers change as well, did you get that?
That was in-state travel.
The in-state travels, she wanted a thousand instead of a million?
Right.
Well, she wanted us to know that you had put in, she had recommended a thousand?
Or that it was approved at a thousand.
Nope.
It was approved at a hundred.
Requested a thousand, which you knew.
Right, which I, it was a typo.
And it was-
Right.
Okay. Does she do a lot of in-state travel now that we're talking about that? Is that what she was thinking, that she needed it for?
So she goes out to these inspections and inspects property or, or to the facilities, suspects, she's using her personal power to do that. I mean, we have discussed in the past, just like building and assessors, to use a municipal vehicle so that we're not paying mileage for that position. And-
Is it because the vehicle's not available all the time?
Because there is a vehicle available now, there wasn't maybe in the past.
Okay, that's better, yeah. Don't we usually get the AMI downs from other departments?
Yeah, actually, the Police Department has a car that she's been using and we're working out the schedule. So we anticipate for the next fiscal year, that car, and Chief Elberti agrees that he can make the car available.
Correct. I don't have any number questions on the Board of Health, can you guys?
I see significant reductions.
Where?
In grand total.
Three thousand from last year.
Grand total, eighty-one, eighty-two, seven, forty-four.
I have eighty-two, seven, forty-four versus eighty-five, eight, forty-three from two thousand.
From last year, right, but from the proposed.
Yes.
If I may speak to Counselor, don't keep speaking.
Yeah.
So our current, our, our current agent is retiring in the summer. And we anticipate our new hire to be coming in at a lower rate, and that's the difference.
Okay.
Normally, I'd like to say I'm thrilled to see reductions, but all that experience, I know will be greatly missed.
Yes.
In the Health Department.
Well, but you're gonna hire based on experience, and if you need to increase the salary based on who you get, you'll do that, right?
Sure, no, absolutely.
Okay.
Any provisions for cross-training during that period?
I think it depends on the candidate and the timeline.
I mean, if there's obviously, if there's somebody who doesn't need the training, it's great, but-
But if there's a need, I, you know, we'll make provisions as, as needed, but.
Do you know why maybe you don't, why the professional services was requested so much higher than it's ever been before?
It is every year. And she did.
What is that, lab work? What's professional services in the Health Department?
Could be contracted services for vacation time, somebody, I know sometimes there's contracts, somebody comes in, various issues. When she goes on vacation.
It's a split, so Chief Elberti spoke about this too, we're figuring out with, so there's the example of, there's a dog bite, and then there's follow-up. And Board of Health, it's Ms. Judah who follows up to make sure that, you know, rabies shots were given or what the treatment was. If there is a case of hepatitis reported, follow-up around that, if there's testing or, or follow-up or something.
Professional services pays for the testing, probably.
Like for bats?
Bats.
That's what she said, for bats, that have to be sent out and have their heads chopped.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
TMI.
That's what they do. Expensive.
Okay, anything else on Board of Health? Council on Aging, so we had a little controversy, which I think was a miscommunication in the Council on Aging. This is the actual amount of people that the Council of Aging has at their disposal? Three van drivers, two up receptionists?
Those are the FTEs, yeah.
And they currently are filled?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool.
And those are the, those are, there are other people there that are not funded. In the general.
Pardon me?
So there's a couple other people there that are not funded in the general fund.
How do they get funded?
They're paid for strictly from the grant.
Oh, there's grants that fund them, okay. Do we deal with them in a human resources way, even though they're grant-funded?
Yes.
Monica, we do?
Yes, we do.
All right. So they're insured and everything in the sense of liabilities and all that?
For, for liability, except I think most of the, some of those positions there are partially funded by grant, and so they would have insurance and, and other things. And then the other employees under that are intermittent, temporary, are tempore, not intermittent, and hours below twenty a week. So that they aren't, they don't have like health insurance or anything like that here, or.
Well, along those lines, I noticed in the numbers that part-time permanent went up significantly from fifteen thousand to fifty-seven thousand. What's the explanation for that?
I, I think it's just a movement of where the, the money's being spent from, because you'll see that seventy, it's not the seventy-five. Instead of it being full-time, they're moving to more part-time employees. So full-time permanent with seventy-five-
Oh, I see, the top line went down forty thousand, I missed that, thank you, okay. So you're getting more part-time there, so the money just moved from one line to another, okay.
Correct.
Got it. Okay? Any other questions on Council of Aging?
Was there any other major restructuring that, I'm just thinking, like, they're, they're down three thousand from what they had last year, but they even requested twenty-two thousand less than what they got last year. Is that just because of the grants and the back?
Or entry-level personnel?
So, yeah, we, we, the new, the director is new.
Right.
And so we had a, a director who had been here a long time and was at the top of the pay scale. And when the new director was hired, came in somewhere closer to Obama, and I don't actually know where. And so, and then even, part of the reason that the part-time permanent went up more than, than he requested was because I wanted to save the money in the department and use it to fill those supplemental positions, because I know that some of his grant funding is going away. And, you know, we have the, you know, on his back, you know, for lack of a better word, because he makes less than his predecessor. At least the money would stay in the department, and as he steps up the grade, you'll slowly see his grade come up, just like everybody else who's gone through our system.
But it's nice to see that when the grants go away, you're willing to fund the positions, you're not dropping the positions, correct?
Right, I mean, the grants do go away, but I know that he's, he's seen some loss from that, we're just trying to help him with the reorganization of the money, yeah.
Correct.
There are certain programs, especially the meal programs, where you're reimbursed for senior. And, you know, it's low, like nine dollars and seventy-three cents, and the hope is that that'll go up, but that's out of our control. It's not, it's money that comes in through federal and the state grant, so it's a reimbursement.
Just for my information, is that income-based food services for seniors, is that based on income?
My understanding is based on just seniors and participation.
It doesn't have to do with-
That is not my understanding, I mean, I can, I will double-check that, but, and, and they're-
The bureaucracy of checking that kind of income, theoretically.
So you walk in, they're, they use the software that they brought on last year. So you come in and there's a, you have an ID with a code, and you're in and out, you swipe in. And for different services for, and swipe out to track a little more efficiently, how many seniors and what they're using it for. But it's, it's over fifty-five.
Correct. Anything else?
Off the butter topic, did Brendan talk to you about the problem with the outreach officers and-
Yes, and that's, and we took a look at that. Yes, and that's, and we took a look at that, because of the height of those ceilings and confidentiality, to address that, you have to bring the ceilings up, I mean, you're not bringing the sidewalls up, you can't cap like a pinka box. And the expense for doing that is amazing.
You're talking about in a senior center?
Yeah, so different use of maybe downstairs or switching with a friend or community rooms is, is an option, but it's, while it's fully accessible, ADA accessible, it's not as you walk in and there's offices are. So white noise machines help a little bit, but.
Yeah, the confidentiality issue just.
Is huge and, and switching around, I mean, he's looking at a couple of options that may help, but truth be told, that space is hard on the first floor to, to make a confidential, and he has his office.
It's because it's such high ceilings, you can hear through the tops and stuff.
Through the half-walls, so.
They're like cubicles.
No confidentiality, no worries.
Well, especially if somebody raises their voice, which.
An older folk.
Seniors don't do that, I'm a senior, I don't do that!
They're helping with medical stuff.
Sorry.
You need your social security number and you need your own medical history and.
We thought the Republic of.
I mean, these guys laugh, they laugh, that's good.
I think it'll come down.
They've been laughing for an hour.
To looking at space throughout that whole building and, and maybe reconfiguring the actual space and using the confidential offices, maybe for those kind of injuries.
That'd be good.
Within that, huge problem.
Veteran services? So, I forget, the vet, veteran is with how many other communities?
So we, we just, for, right now it's Ramby and South Hadley and ourselves. We just signed an agreement and are looking to be approved for a new district, Ramby's going on their own. So it'll be South Hadley and East Hampton, so we anticipate that district to be approved.
And that's just one person covering now only two communities?
Yes.
That's kind of a good thing.
I, I think it's a great thing and our new veteran service officer, Paul Seifert, is very good and is, is just really bringing the office up to a new level and even the small amount of research, I mean, outreach he's been able to do. I, I think we've seen a couple of, of new folks come in for services and I would anticipate that going up.
And the twenty thousand increase, Melissa, in benefits, that's like we just had to add thirteen thousand. I'm assuming you're trying to cover for more veterans?
I don't think it's up to twenty thousand, I think it's up to five.
No, I'm looking at the line, it says Veterans Cash Benefits, three thirty from two thousand eighteen, three fifty, two thousand nineteen.
Well, right, but I, I just put it all up in one instead of breaking it.
Oh, I see.
Those two went away.
The two went away, okay.
And it's not because they won't be spent in that way, I just, to be honest, we didn't have an offer for that veteran, I did this myself.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, I mean.
I see now, yeah, okay, got it.
It's gonna be broken up based on, you know, what's coming, but I don't see the detail of, you know, who's being approved or what, so I just wanted to increase it a small amount, knowing that it probably still wouldn't. Yeah, still wouldn't be enough, but I needed to put it up a little bit.
Hey, who's responsible for the banners? Oh, that's a great idea.
The police department?
Just, is just the chief that did the vet?
Captain Patnod was one who sought with Officer Alexander and they're working with the Legion. Each banner is two hundred dollars, but they also have funds, so if someone wanted to honor a veteran but didn't have the fee, they're working with some folks to make that go up.
Veterans' family pays for the banner?
Unless they come forward, it's not a fundraiser, most communities do it as a fundraiser, if there's any extra money, it'll go back to them.
But it's a great idea, fantastic.
And then the family gets it after the elections day when they come down.
Yeah, it's Megan's father-in-law, fantastic. Bron Star, Tommy just died, anyway, fantastic. Do you know where his banner is, by the way, offside?
I don't, we, there's some, just a lot of people are asking and they're trying to map it out, like just make a list of like.
Where they are?
Yeah.
So that's it on Human Services, does anybody have any other questions, otherwise I'll make a motion. I move that the Finance Committee sent to the City Council a recommendation to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred two dollars and seventy-eight cents for the various departments listed under Section Five, Human Services. Any further discussion? Okay. Alright, Unclassified, page one thirty-nine, Wonderful Thirty-two B, we love that area. I'm happy to see it only went up four percent, anyway, we'll get there. First page, Retirement.
That's an assessment.
Pardon me?
It's an assessment.
I'm not quite sure what you're telling me.
It's an assessment, they tell us and we pay.
Okay.
Contributorial Retirement Board says pay X amount of dollars.
Right, we're trying to make, make up for the, the unfunded part, so we're still on that schedule.
How is that, are we catching up there, the unfunded liability?
Yep, we are, and.
It took me twenty years to figure out what that was. Still don't look for sure.
I don't know how many years off it is still, but it's relatively close, I wanna say we've been cutting it.
Given what other states are going through, this is good, okay, so we don't have any choice on, I guess we can't cut that one, guys.
Do you happen to know what the figure is, just so we can, gotta keep it in mind?
I mean, it's in the retirement report, I could, I mean, it's not in.
Did it say the twenty-seven million or something, thirty million of that level?
Yeah, I have to look at our last actuarial, which I don't have.
And the state extended their timeframe, so that was part of the calculations, didn't they do that in the last couple of years?
They did for some, I don't believe that we did, it's a number of years ago that I was at those board meetings that, you know, as part of the actuarial study over time, I know that for the last couple of years the Retirement Board has agreed to keep to about four, four and a half percent increase every year in order to, to try and keep us to a tight timeline and even extend ours out as far as other communities did to, to try and resolve that sooner.
I know when I looked at other communities, it was really all kind of all over the place and some were really in deep, deep trouble. And communities of similar size too, not just the larger signals, just.
Yes.
I mean, there's a bunch of different assumptions that are moving parts in there too, right? I mean, the healthcare costs.
There's a return policy on investments assumption, which East Hampton has decreased in their last couple of assumptions and then there's a, there's, you know, actuarial is based on like how long is people gonna live, you know, and every year we live longer. And then we changed the, we, we have changed at the state level the way that newer employees coming into the system, the way their benefits are calculated is different than say the way that my benefit is calculated and the percentage I pay in is more, because I'm a nine plus two than people who came in thirty years ago who could come in at, you know, fives and sevens, something like that.
Okay. Workers' comp, up three point six two percent. They give us a bill, we pay it, right? I mean, it's a premium.
It, it's a premium, I mean, I think the, the difference that you see on the one-eleven F is for safety personnel. We changed carriers this past fiscal year and we were given a very competitive quote by Chubb Insurance and Cabot Risk as the manager, management company for it. And the actual, the quote was thirty-seven, eight, sixty-three, but the policy prior to that was fifty-one, nine, fifty. Sometimes when you switch carriers in the second year, they dramatically increase the rates, so we left it. We're just going through the renewal for one-eleven F now for the safety personnel, we left it at the prior year at fifty-one in the event that they jack up the rates on us, yes.
That happens mid-fiscal year.
So it's happening now, so we couldn't project what the numbers were going to be. I just provided to them yesterday the number of safety personnel and they're in the process of reviewing any injuries claims that we've had in police and fire, so. We're hoping that it will stay closer to the thirty-seven mark, but put the fifty-one in as a placeholder because again, they love to lure you away from other companies with an attractive quote and then the next year, they jack the rates up.
That doesn't surprise me.
So, that we'll know shortly.
And the Medicare, that's up twenty, covering.
Yeah, because I just asked for that.
I just asked for that increase, right?
Yes.
Thirty-two B, four point seven percent increase, that's relatively mild, because we had like an eight last year.
Yes, it was nine point eight last year.
I noticed the statement, corresponding plan design changes, is that through collective bargaining that you're allowed to make plan design changes? I, I'm just curious, I thought that was all, the plan is always dealt with in collective bargaining with the units.
So the trust, you know, we participate in the trust and the trust can vote to go ahead and make plan design changes and then it's up to the municipalities to bargain with their units about those plan design changes. At the time that we were putting the budget together, the trust was not only putting forth an increase, but they were also suggesting significant plan design changes and I will say that East Hampton's bargaining units was pivotal in preventing those plan design changes from taking place at the trust. So they have been delayed at least one year.
So this increase, it's not gonna go up further because of the plan design changes that didn't happen?
The increase to a. Correct. Correct. That's right, the trust will be absorbing, they have a reserve of about eighteen million dollars. They will be taking any anticipated losses as claims come in, they're going to absorb it for this plan year. We can expect in fiscal year twenty-twenty that they will be putting plan design changes in effect. And I met with the Thirty-two B Committee today to have discussions around that because our fire union and our police union are heavily involved in, you know, the, the last process and lobbying the trust to overturn their decision to put these plan design changes in effect, which they consider to be substantial, for example, taking a co-pay from fifteen dollars to sixty.
That is substantial.
Substantial.
So they can just do that without the, without the unit saying okay because, or we have to find a different insurance carrier?
Correct, so the, the trust comprised of sixty-nine different municipalities, there are processes, it goes through Executive Committee, which East Hampton, for the first time in a long time, has been on the exact, with me as the chairperson for the trust. They put forth what the recommendations are for the changes and then the IAC, which is a representative from each of the sixty-nine groups, votes on it and they had initially voted to pass and implement these plan design changes. At which time, our unions in East Hampton mobilized and sought the support of other unions in Beltrutown and South Hadley because they are the other two biggest players that belong to the trust. And in effect, came to, to various meetings and Mayor attended those meetings with them and forced basically the hand of the different unions and the municipalities are going to sue if you make these plan design changes. Now that would have been a problem for not the trust, it would have been a problem for the cities and the municipalities. So the trust has delayed those plan design changes.
Why don't they negotiate?
Well.
Just a thought.
So, we suggested that that occur and I set up a meeting between Paul DiMarco from the Teachers, from the NTA and also our firefighters and also a representative from Beltrutown and South Hadley came and met with Joe Shea, who runs the trust and myself, last week to start facilitating, trying to get the buy-in of the unions prior to making this change so that we wouldn't have those problems. I'm hoping that that will continue, Melissa is going to take over my spot on Thirty-two B and she will be running for the chair position in July and also there will be a couple of open executive committee seats and she's going to put her name in the hat for that and hopefully facilitate further meetings between the unions and the trust.
You know, talking is wonderful, rather than having the word lawsuit come out anywhere. Okay.
It seems a simple matter, right, if you can get the buy-in of the unions, they're going to support you, especially when.
It's okay to have a little bit of a co-pay increase, but three hundred percent, come on, or whatever that was.
The changes were significant.
You're so diplomatic. Alright, thank you, any other questions on Thirty-two B, guys? I always worry about that, four point seven percent is at least, not as bad as I was last year.
It is not, and it's saying, it's keeping, the trust is healthy, the city is in a good position in the trust. They have a healthy reserve, they're not, they're not in any trouble. Some plan design changes are necessary and required to ensure that we continue to have reserves that are sufficient. So when there are bad claim years, because claims go like this, that they'll be able to take that.
And the trust is self-insured claim-wise, Blue Cross and Blue Shield manages it, administers it, but paying out of claims comes out of that fund, that eighteen million or whatever.
That's right, it is self-insured with reinsurance for particularly large claims.
So you're saying the co-pay for like a doctor's visit from twenty, you said fifteen, I thought.
Fifteen to sixty was the original proposal for the trust. The one that was voted on was fifteen to forty-five, so still significant.
But that, but that, so that was voted on and accepted?
It was voted on and accepted.
But the unions came back and said, no, we're sticking with.
We're staying at fifteen now.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And now, that's across the trust that figure, not just East Hampton?
Across the trust, when any change to the trust takes effect, it impacts all sixty-nine units.
So liability insurance is level-funded, no big issue there, I'm assuming you guys have any questions? Reserve fund is usually two hundred. Unemployment, we level fund that and as we need it, we increase it with supplementals. And that's everything, any other questions? I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the full council to raise and appropriate the sum of eight, nine, nine hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents for various departments listed under Section Eight, Employee Benefits. All in favor? We are done, have fun here, ordinance meeting.
Thank you. You guys already did water and sewer, right?
Yeah, that was last week.
Because I know that they, some of the, I sort of grabbed my head of that was when they did the projections for the increases. He said like for every, for every twenty percent increase in pricing, a ten percent, or maybe it was every ten percent increase.
Are you talking about the increases they just formulated?
Yeah, that they get, when they do the increase, they get conservation to the tune of like three percent of every ten percent price increase.
I am not sure what you're asking.
Yeah, anyway, the point is, I asked.
I think it was in the budget.
Right, right, but I asked if there was any, if they had any projected new growth or anything for usage and he said, no, they don't figure that in and specifically I was wondering about the, maybe I'm misinformed.
Rates go up, usage goes down.
Right, so it's a ten percent increase, you get three percent decrease in usage.
So there's no good growth, they, rates go up, usage goes down.
Well, but wasn't there gonna be a marijuana growing facility?
It doesn't use that much water, I promise you.
For plants, really?
No, it's very controlled.
It's already, you mean the one in the peaceful?
Right, you know, even we got three breweries in town, we thought, oh, it's gonna, no, very controlled. It doesn't use the kind of water that some of the manufacturing places that just wash.
National FEL and stuff, right, they used to.
Yeah, so we.
And one of the reasons they keep it down is because they can't control their cost, which is why it's called a business, enterprise, separate from the city and it's all usage-based. So when your rates go up, you can fix that, don't water your grass as much as you used to. Anyway, I don't wanna go there, that's, Board of Public Works can deal with that. Move adjourned?
Second.
All in favor? By the way, I have. By the way, I have an unfortunate, unexpected funeral to go through tomorrow night, so Mr. Carey's agreed to run the meeting.
Sorry to be late, sir.